Well, I guess we've all had a good time out there, huh?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Glad to see that the new supervisors are out there making friends and making sure they understand how this county works, but we do have business to conduct, so I'd invite them to come back.
Oh, thank you for joining us.
We're gonna now start our meeting and take up item number one, which is the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, we are now gonna start off with Board of Supervisors Matters, and I will look to my right, Supervisor Shucklian.
Yes, I have a couple of items. Last Thursday, I attended the Project Homeless Connect here at the Rescue Mission in Visalia. From what I could tell, it was a pretty good turnout. I think the newspaper said there were possibly 400 people in the Visalia area served. They also had one in Tulare and in Porterville. So it was good to see some county resources there, folks getting information on child support and their DMV birth certificates. So I think that'll be a good segue into our homelessness task force that we'll be getting up and running here pretty soon. Also, on Friday, I attended the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority, which I'm a member of through TCAG, which is the authority that manages and controls the San Joaquin Amtrak through our corridor, and I rode the Amtrak up there. First order of business that I brought up was to make sure that the train comes on time, because I was a half hour late for the meeting. But it was a good meeting, and one thing that we're working on is adding an express service to Sacramento that would get folks into Sacramento by 8:00 a.m. That's in the works over the next couple of years. It would leave from Fresno, but there would be a throughway bus starting from Hanford to get folks to Fresno. And just a little side note, if you ever take the Amtrak, I was very surprised by the food on the train. I had a delicious chicken tetrazzini, and it was delicious there on the Amtrak, so thank you.
I'm real glad the food's good. Next, we'll move on to Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things today. I had a lengthy phone conference yesterday morning with Little Hoover Commission staff regarding, they're doing a study on tree mortality in California and the interaction between state agencies and the federal government. And so I think it was helpful. I put myself out, I said, "If you need me for a resource, I'd be glad to testify, whatever you need to have." My background of having worked in the timber industry for a number of years and being on a county supervisor. For instance, many of you may or may not know that the National Forest, after 1908, the National Forest were supposed to give 25% of their gross receipts from timber, from mining, from grazing, to the counties and schools of the counties of origin for a loss of property tax. With the demise of the timber industry and the failure to sell timber, these receipts just plummeted. So there was then a program designed, a secure school program, that was designed basically to replace those dollars with federal dollars. That has now expired, and so what we, in Tulare County, it's cut our income, I think, about half. We're fortunate, for us, that we are not very dependent upon that revenue source, but if you go to the northern counties, some of the counties up north of California where they have 90% of the land owned by the federal government, this is their livelihood. I mean, without these resources, they are in a world of hurt, and so are their school systems. So the idea of getting back to actively managing our forest has a lot of implications, and hopefully what we can get them to understand, the Little Hoover Commission said, "Well, our emphasis is state government, it's not the federal government." We can encourage them to do that. I said, "Well, you need to understand some of the connections." As an example, when you think about not receiving this money for education, then that means under Prop 98, the state has to bring, subvent those funds. They have to make up the difference. Our roads, that money was what we used for roads maintenance in the mountains. Without that, that means our road systems are further behind, and we know that's a statewide problem. There's air quality problems, because when they have these wildfires, the air quality that affects the citizens of the San Joaquin Valley, and well, not just our San Joaquin Valley, but the entire state. And then finally, and probably the most importantly, is water. We depend upon the National Forest and Sierra Nevada to provide most of the drinking water and water for irrigation purposes from that watershed, and without the proper management of the forest, we have a real problem. So that's all I'm gonna say, 'cause I talked a lot more than I intended to. But anyway, it was a good conversation. I think it may have opened up the concept of how we can't just, in isolation, work from the CAL FIRE side. I think we have to really look at CAL FIRE and the Forest Service and get engaged.
That was actually a much shorter Board of Supervisors Matters than I expected when you started talking about tree mortality, so thanks, Supervisor. Baby Croc, Supervisor Crocker.
That's right, Baby Croc, B.C. Thank you, Chairman. I won't go over all of my items this week, as I did last week, so I noted the Chairman's request. I just want to highlight a few things that happened last week. We had a great Lindsay Chamber Annual Awards Saturday night, and honored some excellent folks there. I was happy to attend on behalf of the county and some longtime friends that were honored Saturday night, and so that was great. I attended my first San Joaquin Valley Policy Council meeting Friday, just before Supervisor Shucklian's meeting, so there was a lot of good people from throughout the valley that were in attendance, and we got to discuss really the need to partner and make sure that we're, they're working together on securing funds for Highway 99, to make sure that we have the adequate freight needs for our valley, to make sure that we're continuing to be an economic engine for the state. And then the last thing I just want to highlight is, last week I had the opportunity to meet with a group of citizens that has come before this board from the east Visalia area that just had concerns, and so I was very appreciative to be able to go into their home, to be able to listen, as I begin to, you know, just get information regarding the project and to hear their concerns, and so I appreciate that opportunity for being able to listen and to receive feedback. And so I just asked, I know there was a couple of comments about a possible open house, town hall forum, and so I just like to ask staff that if we have consideration, that we can look at making that some type of listening forum where we can really gain feedback, and so that would be my only comment, that we're doing more to get feedback for that. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Ennis.
Mr. Chairman, Lake Success, 45,000 acre feet. We're having a hard time drawing it down. The runoff continues to be pretty great. They're letting 1,300 second feet. I guess we had out a day, I guess we had somebody in Porterville may have drowned in it the other day that was trying to evade police officers and jumped in the river, and he went down the third time and never came up, so they continue to look for him. Snow level's higher than it's been in 10 years. We've got five and a half feet at the Ponarosa, Sequoia Crest, and Balls Park. I am hoping with this heavy snow load that it's gonna help us with this tree mortality. Maybe it's gonna take a lot of this dead matter out of these trees, break dead limbs off, and get the problem more on the ground than up in the tree, so we're hoping that that'll work, but you know, it's probably still too soon. The trees haven't been dead that long, but continue to look in that way. Well, that's just about all. Well, I continue to look at the South County Jail. It's moving forward out there on Scranton, and I drive by there at least once a week to take a look at it, and it looks like they're getting ready to start putting the walls up, looks like to me. So once that starts, you'll see a lot of big changes out in that area, so that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. To cover a few items today that I wanted to highlight, tomorrow, there is an ad hoc committee meeting between the Eastern Quia GSA Groundwater Sustainability Agency and the Greater Quia Groundwater Sustainability Agency to meet and resolve, hopefully resolve or begin conversations about addressing the overlap that exists between the two maps that are planned to be submitted to the Department of Water Resources. I hope that meeting goes very well and that we can get this resolved in a friendly manner, rather than moving towards any kind of aggressive moves that are possible and could happen if we're not able to get this resolved in friendly conversations. On Thursday this week, we continue to move forward with our property and evidence facility. We have an ad hoc committee of this board, and you know, last week it was pretty interesting during the board meeting. One of my colleagues here made a comment and just said that he didn't want to be assigned any more committees, any more functions and different things. Well, newsflash, bud, you're young, you're energetic, you're single, so I look forward to being on the...
Mingles.
I don't know, I don't know, but you're gonna be added to another committee, the property and evidence and also facilities ad hoc committee, so I look forward to working with you there.
Reverse psychology, that's what I was doing, so.
But anyway, so look forward to working with you on that. But that facility continues to move forward and will definitely be an improvement for our Sheriff's Department and law enforcement entities in preserving evidence and dealing with that. We also have an SJVIA meeting this Friday here at the Board of Supervisors Chambers, and at that meeting, we will be selecting a new benefits consultant for the authority. Each county has, between Fresno and Tulare, has already made the changes and selected their own individual consultants, and now this is coming before the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority as a board to potentially choose a new consultant to hopefully guide that organization into, say, some better financial times. And lastly, I just want to bid farewell and say thank you to former city manager, or interim city manager of the city of Tulare, Paul Malickian. He was recruited back to the community of Reedley where he came from. He brought a fresh perspective to the city of Tulare and was much more willing to work with the county on county-related projects than his predecessor, and so I hope that the Tulare City Council moves towards selecting a new city manager that continues that willingness to work with the county. That's all I have for today, and if nobody else wants another bite at the apple, we will move on to number two on our agenda today, which is a presentation given by Paul Yoder of Shaw Yoder &amp; Antui regarding an update on state legislation. Good morning, Paul.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning for having me here today. It's a pleasure. I can have a lot to cover. I'm gonna try to do that as efficiently as I can.
And we're not timing you, so feel free.
I do want to apologize for being unable to make the meeting. I apologize to you all for that. Just something came up, and I do apologize. So greetings from Sacramento. So Governor Brown's released his proposed 1718 state budget, and the first thing, just at 40,000 feet, that I want to note is that there is a disagreement in terms of the revenue that may be available to the state of California in the budget year ahead. The legislative analysts and the State Department of Finance are pretty far apart, as far as that goes. Second thing at 40,000 feet, what do you want to...
Can you speak up a little bit?
Talking to the microphone. Did you turn it off? There you go, it's on now.
Okay, good. Sorry about that, too. Second thing I want to note is that Governor says that he needs about $3.2 billion in solutions, but lo and behold, the Department of Finance came out and admitted, a couple days after the budget was released, that they had actually made a $1.4 billion mistake in the accounting for the Coordinated Care Initiative in the state of California. You add that to what the Governor proposes to put aside, in addition to what's already in reserves in California, and that would be $1.8 billion, that 1.8 and that $1.4 billion mistake, pretty much, in a lot of people's minds, add up to the $3.2 billion problem that the Governor says he has to solve. But having said that, in terms of some very specific programs that the counties care about, I'm happy to say that the levels of funding will be consistent for the SB 678 program. That helps your probation, folks, here locally. The level of funding in the state budget will also be consistent in terms of Prop 47 revenues. That helps mental health and substance abuse. The level of funding for the Medi-Cal Administration Program in California will be consistent, and the level of funding for the foster care reform in California will also be consistent. I understand you're gonna get a presentation on that later, so I won't go into great detail there. Obviously, the transportation package that we've all sort of been waiting for and hoping for is still languishing, but I do want to make sure the board knows that in the state senate, Senator Bell plans on moving his bill, SB 1. That is a $6 billion proposal. The Governor's at 4.2, and that's a $6 billion proposal, but Senator Bell is gonna move his bill, and we actually think the votes may be there in the state senate, and that package does require a two-thirds supermajority, but nevertheless, we think the votes may be there. We may see a little bit of momentum on the transportation issue here pretty quickly. The biggest thing affecting the counties and the Governor's proposed budget, far and away, is his proposal to shift the state, the non-federal share of cost for the in-home supportive services program back to the counties, and to go back to the old arrangement that we had once upon a time. The Governor cites the failure of the Coordinated Care Initiative that I mentioned a minute ago as the reason for that proposal. Do you want to make sure the board knows CSAC is engaged? They are going to, the leadership of CSAC is going to meet on February 13th, we believe, with Governor Brown. They're gonna have a heart-to-heart, as we say, and I don't know what will come out of that meeting, but I can tell you that CSAC is very engaged, and I think ultimately, if the Governor's not gonna move on his proposal, I think they will oppose that proposal vigorously. So that's on the IHSS proposal. Looking ahead, we've got a couple hundred bills that have already been introduced. We will probably see on the natural about 2,000 new bills. Just want to remind, mainly for the public's consumption, that every year about 2,000 bills are introduced, probably less than half get to the Governor. I'd say about 40%, and of that number, Governor Brown will typically veto 15% of the bills, and so that's why we get about 600, 650 new laws every year. So we'll obviously be watching all those very closely for you. Our firm is gonna continue to provide information and access, everything that Tulare County needs. Look forward to hosting you soon in Sacramento. We've made a lot of progress recently on water issues locally here, want to keep doing that. Watching, one thing I don't think I mentioned last year, I want to make sure I mention this year, is we're watching the Governor's proposal to shut down the developmental centers in California very closely. We understand that the Porterville DC is the second-largest employer in the county, and so we're watching that very closely. I do think it will be quite some time before Porterville is proposed for closure, but Fairview and Orange County and the Sonoma Developmental Center are definitely proposed for closure, but we will continue to watch that for you. On the tree mortality issue, I am happy to report, Supervisor Worthley mentioned that earlier, I'm happy to report that the Senate Natural Resources Committee will have a hearing in early March. We're working with CSAC and RCRC on that. We're trying to figure out if we can have a county panel for that hearing, and stay tuned on that, on the tree mortality issue. I think that's probably all the things that I want to highlight for you today. Happy to take questions. Thank you for letting me represent this great county.
I volunteer Supervisor Worthley to be on any panel that Sacramento may need. Just say that. Go ahead, Supervisor.
I was just gonna ask your opinion, Paul. When I was at the executive committee meeting at CSAC, our understanding is that the difference between on the transportation proposals, Senator Beals versus the Governor's proposal, it's really the local government that takes it in the shorts under the Governor's proposal. So that, we need to be staying very closely attuned to that, because obviously, we need to get a share of the road revenues for our local roads to maintain those, but I just was curious if that's your take on the situation.
Yeah, I think, you know, Senator Bell's SB 1, Assemblymember Frazier's AB 1 are just better from a local government perspective, from a county perspective. There's been a lot of conjecture in Sacramento about, well, first of all, the Governor did come up to 4.2 from his previous proposal of $3.7 billion, so that's a positive sign. And I think what I want to say is that because it has a two-thirds vote package, and that is really not easily done in the Assembly especially. I'm not saying it will be easy in the senate, but it's relatively easier with this legislature. I really believe that if the Assembly has 54 votes for a transportation package, and the number is different than the Governor's number, then I think and I hope that the Governor will relent and be okay with a higher number, and thus a number that's better for the counties.
Supervisor Crocker.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Is there any movement on CEQA reform? I know when Senator Rubio left the legislature that he was kind of holding that and really taking that torch, but I haven't heard anything recently. Is there any talk about doing anything with CEQA?
Yeah, Supervisor, through the chair, the biggest news, I would say, in the last legislative session on CEQA was really the extension of, not waiving CEQA, but truncating the amount of time that litigation can go on for the really, really big projects in California. Apple built a new headquarters in the Silicon Valley, the Warriors Arena, and some really, really big development projects in LA were able to take advantage of that law. The other thing I would say is, within the context of the transportation discussion, there is discussion about CEQA reform, and I think if you see CEQA reform in 2017, it's probably gonna be in the transportation context. If not there, then perhaps in the housing construction context. What people are trying to do, every time they try to reform CEQA, I would say, more seriously, either transportation or housing-wise, they're really not taking CEQA on directly as much as they're sort of going over here in the code and saying, "Okay, you can do this." You're not necessarily getting around CEQA, but you can do this now, under certain circumstances.
Very good. And then something that I've just heard, and I want to see how much validity there is, but I've heard some talk about Prop 13 being looked at by the new supermajority in the legislature, so how likely is that, that we would see that this session?
I think, you know, Senator Hertzberg, who, former Speaker Hertzberg, last session chaired the Senate Governance and Finance Committee, and he held a lot of meetings about, even more generally, tax reform, and it didn't go anywhere, and he's not the Chair of that committee anymore, and so I don't want to tell you that it's not going to happen, but I think if there's gonna be property tax changes, because I don't even want to, I don't know that I want to call it, well, just want to be careful here. If there're gonna be changes to Proposition 13 ever in my lifetime, I think it's gonna happen on the ballot, the statewide ballot, probably.
Supervisor Ennis.
Anything on transportation funds, as far as, I know they've been doing some research on having people pay for the miles they travel, gas tax, is there anything in the future that's coming that we need to know about?
Well, I think the packages that are pending in the legislature have a mix of gas tax, diesel tax, vehicle registration fee increase. There is, there was, well, there is legislation that requires Caltrans to study the issue of a vehicle miles traveled proposal. That's been around almost as long as I've been lobbying, but a bill finally did get through to at least get it studied, and the state of California is looking for people to volunteer to participate in that, and that study is ongoing. We'll see what happens, but the bills that are currently pending in the legislature have, I would say, a more traditional mix of funding sources in them, and not a vehicle miles traveled fee.
Weight fees.
Weight fees are in there. Yeah, there are. Now, there are a lot of discussions about getting the weight fees rededicated to transportation out of the general fund. That's where you kind of go back, Supervisor, I think, to this disagreement on how much money the state's gonna have. If the legislature could get the Governor to relent on a higher number, then maybe within the transportation context, they might be able to do something about shifting those diesel, or excuse me, those weight fees back into transportation. That's something our firm is trying very hard to do.
Wasn't Beal trying to get like half of the return, so not necessarily all of it, but gets a portion of it back?
There have been a lot of different forays with the Governor and his administration, and he's rejected just about all of them. Well, he's rejected all of them, I shouldn't say just about all of them, he's rejected all of them. The State Department of Finance wants to keep that money in the general fund.
Supervisor Shucklian.
Hi, Paul, nice to meet you.
No.
I have a question, I don't know, maybe our IHSSA folks, I should be asking them instead, but with the AB 1618, the No Place Like Home bill for the homeless, how do you see the county, you know, receiving funds if we haven't already, and how would, you know, would we be able to use them?
Well, it's gonna be competitive, and there's no doubt about it, and people need to sharpen their pencils. The counties are broken into groups of counties, and so you're competing with, I'll say, like-sized counties. I think you probably know, Supervisor, it's based on a housing-first model, and that's something that I would just say, to be competitive, I think, any county that really wants to be competitive is gonna have to embrace that pretty heartily. The whole design really was modeled after one program in particular in San Diego, and so, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to give anybody a false impression, I think folks have got to model their proposals after what has happened in San Diego, but there's a lot of opportunity there, absolutely. And I, staff obviously can speak more to the details of it, but we are, we are tracking the process at Housing and Community Development, and every time there's a new development there, we provide staff with notes on that.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
All the questions have been asked, I'm done. Do you have anything else you'd like to add, Paul?
I think I speak for the entire audience when I was just sort of stunned there, but, but, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just cannot underscore enough how much I and my firm love representing Tulare County and its citizens, so thank you.
Thank you for coming down and sharing your update with us, and we look forward to seeing you in Sacramento. Don't necessarily look forward to dealing with the other folks in Sacramento, but seeing you is always fun.
Okay, likewise.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members.
Thanks, Paul.
Safe travels. All right, next, we're gonna move on to item number three on our agenda, and that is public comments. I do have a request from our fire chief. Chief Norman, would you like to approach the podium, please?
Good morning.
I think, I think Paul turned off the microphone. There's the little button right there on the stem.
How long you been here, Charlie?
Evidently not long enough. Thank you. I had three minutes since I started. As the State of the County addressed, mentioned last week, that the fire department has received over $466,000 in grants. Outside, we have approximately, in the high 300s, in the area of grant with the assets we've recently acquired. We've recently acquired a water tender that's going to service Porterville for many, many years. It's been a long, arduous process through Community Development Block Grant. I'd like to thank Deputy CAO Eric Coyne and his staff, Sandra Saban, they've been instrumental in securing the funding for this. And we also, to limit our carbon footprint and have some non-emergency response vehicles that will help us to be more environmentally friendly. Through APCD, we received three grants for three Chevy Volt. Stephen Murch, our financial analyst, was instrumental in writing those. They currently have a range of about 275 miles, so you can get to LA, come back, and hopefully not get stuck in a blighted neighborhood without charging. Come on, that was funny.
They're hybrids.
But they're, but they're outside. Thank you for the board and CAO's support on these items, and look forward to serving the county for many years. So whenever you catch a break in the action, they are parked outside.
That's great, Chief, thank you. And I have to ask how you picked the Chevy Volt, because I think our fellow Chevy Volt driver over here must have influenced that decision in some way. He wasn't on the board yet, which is why I asked the question.
Smart man.
That's it.
Okay.
Although I can't find the button. I'm a smart man.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Next, I'd like to call up Health and Human Services Next, I'd like to call up Health and Human Services Director Jason Britt, has a request to speak to the board regarding recent activity that's been undertaken by the department regarding the new facility potential at Tulare and Lover's Lane.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, CAO, County Council, Jason Britt, Human Service, HHSA Agency Director. I just want to take a quick moment to update you on our planning for the community listening sessions for the Visalia Wellness and Recovery Center out on South Lover's Lane. We have, yesterday, we're able to confirm the dates of February 21st and 22nd at the Cafe 210 to host those listening sessions. We will be rapidly getting information out to the community for those dates and times since we were just able to confirm the venue yesterday. We also have a single-page fact sheet that we have developed to provide some more information to the community regarding what the center is and what the center is not. It is a non-treatment, non-clinical wellness and recovery center for those individuals who have suffered from mental illness and are sort of on their journey to reintegrating into the community. Many of these members work, so there will be classes for budgeting, there'll be helping people find a job who are not working, and so on and so forth. So there is a single-page fact sheet that I would like to leave up here for members of the public to take with them if there are anyone here, just to sort of give them a brief synopsis. And our goal for the February 21st and 22nd meetings are really to listen to the community of how we can be a good neighbor, how we can partner with them to make everyone feel good about us being there and providing services and being able to be really a partner with the community in that process. So, there will be another update as we get closer to remind people of the times and the dates and the location so that we have ample notification to the community.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your comments. All right, next, I have requests from Roy Nelson to come up and speak. He's asked to speak about item number nine on our consent calendar, but because that is usually approved in one motion, I will take that comment at this time.
Good morning. My name's Roy Nelson, I'm the manager of the Exeter Cemetery District. I've worked there 32 years, I've been manager 23, and we've recently lost the board, and our last existing board member, Mr. Spot, passed away unexpectedly. But the reason I'm here today is that for Ms. Olivia Mannering, she's scheduled to be appointed today to the board, and I was wanting to request that Jenny Powell replace Olivia Mannering at this time. Jenny Powell has worked for our accountant, she knows our finances, she knows our vendors. Now she works for a financial company and can get us grants, which were in very bad need of money since the popularity of cremation is climbing every year. We're in very financial straits, and I believe Mrs. Powell would be a better fit on our board at this time than Mrs. Mannering. That's pretty much it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. All right, next up, I have a request from Jenny Powell to speak.
I'm Jenny Powell, Roy was just referring to me. I actually have already attended a meeting for the Exeter Public Cemetery and actually went through the process of swearing in, so I was under the impression I was already on the board, which is why this is kind of surprising to us. I am a financial professional, I have extensive knowledge of the cemetery operation, especially from a financial perspective, so I do feel that I could add a lot to the board, so we would like to kindly ask that I be appointed to the board at today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have a request from Andrea Souza.
I too have been, well, thought I was appointed to the board already, and I've worked with Jenny so far, we've got together and we've kind of got a game plan, and now we've kind of got this wrench here. We weren't sure how all this was supposed to run, and when we came down here and asked questions, everybody kept saying we had to go back to Exeter, and so we did what we thought we were supposed to do, and went through a couple books, me and Jenny looking, and came across something, I believe it's out of the book, it's a government code that says that they have the right of 90 days to appoint somebody, and then after that, if nobody was appointed, that the Board of Supervisors would appoint somebody. So, we thought we were all good, so here we thought we had our little board starting to go, and now this wrench has come in, and we're just kind of bewildered about it because we're not sure, you know? And as I said, me and Jenny have worked a plan out already, so we're just hoping that we can continue with our plan and that you will allow Jenny to be on the board. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I also have a request from Lester Phillips.
Thank you all for your service and welcome to the new supervisors. I'm going to talk about the mental health facility that's proposed over on Lover's Lane, I live near that community. Recently, this board approved by unanimous vote to purchase that building for the purpose of using it for mental health services. Now, I strongly believe that the mental health services are desperately needed in our communities. However, I do disagree with the location that you've selected. I don't know how many alternate locations were considered prior to selecting this, but it did happen over a quick period of time, and we had a little notice in the community that this was happening. My opposition to this facility being placed in that location is multifaceted. Number one, it's not in compliance with the zoning for the city of Visalia, and the county bypassed the zoning laws in Visalia by invoking exemption for that. Now, my main concern is safety and security in that area. We have a school close by, many children are playing and walking back and forth to school in that area. Traffic will be increased, and I mean foot traffic, even though it's said that the bus services will provide rides, there will be an increase in foot traffic. And also, the school principal at Pinkham School expressed deep concerns for the placement of this facility. Property values are also a concern, you know, whenever somebody's buying a home, they look at the area and what's in that area before they buy the home. And this will deter people from buying, strongly affecting the property values in that area. I wish you'd reconsider the placement of this facility in this particular area and look at some alternate locations. Again, mental health services is desperately needed, and I agree with that. I just disagree with the location you've selected. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else wishing to speak under public comment this morning? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the board. We will now move on from item three to take up our consent calendar. Items four through 14, there were several members of the public who commented regarding item number nine. I'll look to this board and see how they'd like to proceed specifically towards Supervisor Crocker.
I don't have a problem with the consent.
Okay.
No problem.
Well, I guess I'd like to have a individual discussion about number nine.
Okay, so let's pull item number nine for a comment, and we will remove that and address that separately, but if there are no, no further items to be removed.
Who's approval of the remainder?
Any member of the public like to have any additional items removed? Okay, seeing none. I have a motion by Supervisor Chuckly and a second by Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We will now take up item number nine, which is a request from the Board of Supervisors, so it's our own request, so.
Yeah, my request really was that, obviously, this is a very unusual circumstance. Normally, we struggle to get qualified people to apply for positions, and the fact that we have, and I don't even know, I mean, looking back, we have no attachments to this, so I'm assuming that at the time, this recommendation was made, I don't know whether she was the only person that applied for the position, or maybe, maybe you know something about it.
So I, there were multiple applications, I reviewed them, spoke with a couple of the candidates, and thought that they were, the two that are recommended today, the one that was appointed and the one that we have before us, I thought were very well-qualified. And I, as I noted to the Cemetery District, due to the recent passing of their third and last member, they have another vacancy, so they have an opportunity to fill that with whoever they'd like.
So you're basically saying with the two that are appointed today or proposed, if we approve this item, they could actually appoint the remaining Ms. Powell on their own?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that the Board of Supervisors is the appointing authority, and we'll get you a legal memo on that to address the third vacancy.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Count.
But there is another, at any rate, there is another vacancy that either may be filled by the Cemetery District or by our board, but that's a third vacancy that we still are within timeframe of being able to appoint someone?
We're giving you a legal memorandum on that, but the Board of Supervisors is the appointing authority, but there is a third seat available.
That's my, that's my, okay. So that it's not like it's an either-or situation, there's the opportunity to appoint someone additional, however, when that gets done, there's another vacancy that needs to be filled, and there's the ability to fill that without having to go through the election process.
By a registered voter in the district.
Okay, all right. Hopefully that addresses your questions, and the chair will entertain a motion.
I move to approve item nine.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, please vote. Can't vote twice, Amy.
I can't?
Nope, not on one item.
Ordered with the president, that's what's happening all across the nation. Let's try it again. Did that work?
Was it a slip of the finger?
My finger slips a lot, Mike, let me tell you.
Vote again, okay.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now move on to the untimed portion of our meeting today and take up item number 15. I believe this is Juliette.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, CAO and council. As this slide says, my name is Juliette Webb, and I am very happy to be here today. I'm the Human Services Director for Health and Human Services Agency, and I'm here today to talk to you about the continuum of care reform. Thanks to Paul Yoder for setting the stage for that, talking about foster care reform actually being fully funded in the governor's budget, so that's, that's exciting. This has been a law, oh, and I also wanted to point out, Chairman Mandropool, you actually mentioned the continuum of care reform in last week's State of the County, thank you very much for that. So I'm here today to go over what is the continuum of care reform, what's already been occurring in Tulare County to get prepared for the launch of the continuum of care reform, and what's planned for the future, and then to ask your board for some support to move forward to implement with the funding we're receiving from the federal and state government, the facets of the continuum of care reform. So, here we go. So this has really been, I will say, labor of love. This has been, since October 11th of 2015, the governor signed Assembly Bill 403, which was called the Foster Care Continuum of Care Reform into law. At that, that was, it is a package of reforms for the foster care system that specifically, a couple of points I want to point out, is one of the main goals is to drastically reduce the number of children who are placed in group homes. We know that children who are placed in congregate care do not have good outcomes, as by and large, become institutionalized. So AB 403's goal is to ensure that California's counties are doing whatever they can to get children out of group homes, and children who have to be put into group homes, but they're not staying there for very long. What I would like to say on this is Tulare County does phenomenal in this regard already. We are actually well below the state average of children placed in group homes. They only comprise about 2.8% of our initial placements in Tulare County, so it's a really low number. So, then the other piece, which is a pretty tall order, is to ensure that youth in foster care have their physical, mental, and emotional needs met, that they have the greatest chance to grow up in a permanent and supportive home, and that they have the opportunity to grow into self-sufficient, successful adults. Really, that's the core mission of Child Welfare Services to begin with. However, this is a tall order, and it doesn't, it takes a village to ensure that we're successful in this regard. So I want to talk about what we've done to ensure that we're going to be as successful as possible with this here in Tulare County. So, when the law got signed into law in October of 2015, we moved quickly to assemble all of the partners that would need to be part of this collective effort. We can't do this in a silo, it requires a number of agencies as well as folks who are involved in our system to inform what we are doing. So I'd like to point out that for the Health and Human Services Agency, this was a collaboration between the Mental Health Department as well as the Tulare Works and Child Welfare Services Divisions of Human Services. This was an active collaboration with probation and continues to be to this day. I would like to thank, I know Chief Myers here, I would like to thank her and all of her staff for the ongoing support and participation in this planning effort. We had the Tulare County Office of Education, we had CASA of Tulare County, we had our Family Resource Centers who provide a lot of the early intervention and prevention services for folks in our county. We had Parent Partners, who are folks who have been through our system, who have a lived experience, who have come out on the other side successful and can inform our processes. We had a Resource Family Mentor added. We did get some preliminary funding for the continuum of care reform in 2015-16, which we were able to use to put into place some pieces of the plan, one of them being a Resource Family Mentor, who's a foster parent mentor, someone to work directly with foster parents. So we have the Parent Partners who work a lot with our birth parents and families in our system, and now we have Resource Family Mentors who work directly with our foster parents for success in dealing with our children and placement. As well as Foster Family Agencies, they're definite partners of ours in this regard, as well as the Chulie River Tribe was part of our planning process. So again, very collective effort, we had six committees put together because there are multi, is a multifaceted initiative, so it would not have been possible without this collective collaboration. Here's the good news, Child Welfare is going to be receiving some money for the purposes of implementing CCR. We already received, like I said, about $350,000 for the first piece that's up there, Resource Family Training, Recruitment, and Support in 2015-16, which your board accepted in, and we used it to already put some of these pieces into play. We're getting more. So, as this is post-realignment of Child Welfare Services, and these are new requirements, they are 100% federal and state paid for, so we will be receiving, well, as you can see up there, about $1.5 million to implement the continuum of care reform. And what we're going to be doing, three of the main components, Foster, Resource Family Training, Recruitment, and Support, which we refer to affectionately as FIPERS, used to be called Foster Parent Revengeion Recruitment and Support, it really is about how do we make our resource families, our foster parents, be most successful, and that's about pre-training, pre-certification, and about how do we ongoing support them. So, one of the issues with foster parenting is we always have a lack of foster parents and qualified foster parents to serve our youth. And then, how do we ensure that we retain those that we have? So like I talked about, that Foster Parent Mentor that we've brought on, how do we, how do we make it be as successful as possible in terms of how prepared they are, and then how are their relationship with the county is, so that they're best able to serve those youth. Child and Family Teams, which is an approach to working with families that ensures ongoing communication and service coordination with the families present, it is a multidisciplinary team of folks who come forward, child and fam, children and families also select folks who are part of those teams. Those teams cannot occur without the child and family being present or the family members being present, so it really requires this whole, you've probably heard it said before, nothing about me, without me, so it really is about that we have the folks that are, we're trying to make successful as they work with the child welfare system at the table when we're making decisions on things like placements, mental health services needed. on things like placements, mental health services needed, any facet of what we do in Child Welfare Services. So Child and Family Teams, all the kids who come into Child Welfare Services will be assessed by our Child and Family Team. Mental health is a huge partner in that effort as well, to ensure that we get those kids triaged into the mental health services as quickly as possible, as indicated. Again, another wonderful and strong collaboration we have with our Mental Health Department. And then, the third facet is Resource Family Approval, which is a real change. This is one of the main, one of the big changes in how Child Welfare Services is going to be operating in Tulare, in Tulare County, as well as the state of California. We're actually going to have resource families as opposed to foster families. They're going to be called resource families, and they're going to include not only foster parents, who are providing for children who are not their relatives, resource families include relative caregivers as well. And it comes in, and what we do through this is that we, we put a consistent process in place for how we work with our families, whether they be relatives or whether they be foster parents. And then we get them through this approval process that sets them up immediately for permanency. So what else, what I mean by that is, they come in and they're going to provide care for their niece. They've got a sister or brother who's having some trouble and getting some assistance from Child Welfare, they step in and they're taking care of their niece. Perhaps something goes wrong and they, that niece, that child cannot reunify with their parent. Through the Resource Family Approval Process, if that relative wanted to adopt, and it indicated that from the get-go, they're ready to adopt. They've gone through one process, and they're ready to complete the adoption piece. So this will, as you know, we'll be coming forward every year to the Board and talk about our adoptions program, which I feel we do really strongly here in Tulare County. This will even improve further how many kids were able to get into our two adoptions. Well, that's funny, sorry about that. Okay, so, under the Continuum of Care Reform, there's two units that need to be created. So a number, a lot of this money, this $1.5 million, we're going to be putting into services and supports in the communities to provide direct services, but we also have to have staff to provide all these new tasks. So we need a Child Assessment Team, who are going to conduct those CFTs, those Child and Family Team meetings that I talked about, as well as we are going to create a Resource Family Approval Team to support those Resource Family Applications and Renewals, to monitor the process, and to ensure that we are as successful in implementing these two pieces of the Continuum of Care Reform as much as possible. So respectfully, Tulare County will be now requesting to add the following positions to comply with these new activities. So before you, you'll see that we are asking for a total of 16 staff members. 10 of them will be direct Child Welfare Services social workers. Two of them will be our leads, who are, who, well, it probably goes without saying, lead social workers on each team, as well as a supervisor. And then, of course, with any new addition to responsibilities, there's lots of administrative work that comes along with it, and we need to add a few office assistants as well to help us with this. Again, oh, oh, another position, excuse me, Raddings asking for 17, I apologize for that. Another piece of this is Mental Health has to work with us, I shouldn't say has to, is happy to work with us, to complete what they call facility certification and recertification. So under this Continuum of Care Reform, those group homes now become what they call short-term residential treatment facilities, and they have to be monitored and certified by our Mental Health Department, in order to, to ensure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and that they're keeping accurate records of everything that they're providing. So that requires some effort from our Mental Health Department, it's a brand-new responsibility that they're taking on, and so in that regard, we're going to need to ask for an additional licensed clinical social worker, who will do the certification of sites, monitor our contracts with these providers, look at their documentation, et cetera, et cetera. So that will be what that person's responsibility is. So, without further ado, I am requesting that the Board approve to expand Child Welfare Services by accepting these funds, and allowing us to proceed with our Human Resources Department and filling these positions. I would be happy to entertain any questions at this time.
Any questions, now that the slide has prompted it? Supervisor Worthley?
Juliette, I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but I just think I should ask it for fiscal purposes, but these funds are not one-time funds, it's going to be ongoing.
No, and in actuality, and the Governor has already stated that he may have underestimated what he put forward for Child and Family Teams, we may be looking for even more money, and they may revise potentially. So, no, these are ongoing funding sources.
Supervisor Ennis?
Are you promoting people within to these supervisor jobs, or, and then backfilling behind them?
You bet, that would absolutely, especially because this is a very complicated program, you certainly want your seasoned social workers working on it, so yes, that would absolutely be the way we would like to fill the positions. Thank you, Supervisor Ennis.
Okay, any additional questions? Any questions from members of the public? Thank you for this presentation, Juliette, I think it's a great, great program. We already do a fantastic job here in Tulare County, and I just hope this will help us improve even more, and, you know, for those 2.8% that do end up in a group home placement, I hope that this is a better fit and a better outcome for those children, so.
One last question, do we, do we, so do we no longer use the term foster family? I mean, does this resource family take, take the place of foster family, or is that?
You know, it's going to be, it's going to be some education of the public, for sure, right? Because, yes, foster parent is somewhat being replaced by the resource family, but it is, it's somewhat same same, but like I said, it incorporates for resource families a more robust training and support program for them.
That's great.
Okay, I'd move for approval.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Crocker, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. We are now going to move on to item number 16 on our agenda, and that's a request from the Assessor's Office. Great, we get to hear from Roland Hill, to approve a personnel resolution and to add two cadastral mapping technician three positions. Roland, thank you for joining us, and guess what? I've got the gavel in the microphone, it's a little bit different than the Retirement Board, so go ahead.
You've got an edge on me, sir.
You can take some shots at me in the Retirement Board, but I got you here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, all the supervisors and staff. Roland Hill, Tulare County Assessor, Clerk, Recorder, here with a request for the Board to approve personnel resolution for us to add two positions. And if you have any further interest in, in one of the mundane administrative staffing issues that we have, our Assistant Assessor, Mr. Kokendorfer, will certainly answer any questions.
Way to pass the buck. Does anybody have any questions on this item?
No, it must be, things must be picking up on us, that's great.
Well, you know, one of the issues we've had very recently is that our Supervisor of our Mapping Division, who's been with us for about 42 years, has announced his retirement, and it's creating a bit of turmoil in that division, as you might imagine. He's immensely knowledgeable, and we're having to do some restructuring and trying to, to, you know, sustain, you know, the, the knowledge base, and so these positions are going to help.
That's interesting, because there's actually an employee with more than 40 years, but has fewer years of service than Roland Hill, I didn't even realize that.
I was going to ask, ask our assessor if he could give us the origin of the term "cadastral," but.
Cadastral, yeah, it's a fancy, here we have resource parents now, or resource, yeah, instead of foster, so, instead of mappers, they use the, I believe it's a Greek derivation, but "cadastral," just meaning mapping, yeah.
I'm tired of listening to Roland make things up. Does anybody have a motion?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion from Supervisor Worthley, a second from Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations on your new cadastral.
Keep an eye out for the jackalope, will you?
All right, next, we're going to move on to item number 17, which is a request, to request and to review and approve an update from the Resource Management Agency regarding the design and construction for Leadbetter Park.
You get a dynamic duo this morning. This is a joint project with both RMA and also with Capital Projects and Parks. The Housing Reward, Eric Coyne, Deputy CAO.
John Hess, Deputy CAO.
Right.
Kind of hard to adjust the speaker.
It's like Mark Schwarzenegger and Danny DeVito.
Twins.
The old guy always gets the bill.
Danny DeVito here to my right.
Exactly.
I'm going to stop talking about that now.
We're a bunch of comedians today, go ahead.
This is what happens when you follow Roland. The housing-related parks program has been frankly a godsend to Tulare County. This is a statewide program, and basically what it does, it rewards local entities for promoting affordable housing. You create your projects, and then you get a certain rebate based on the number of houses, bedrooms that are constructed. That goes into a pool that's available statewide for people with eligible projects. Now, these projects are geared towards the most needy communities, you know, where is the ultimate need? So we look at this as, and the linkage is, everybody enjoys a safe place to recreate and to improve their quality of life, and so why not locate housing, I mean, parks in close relationship to affordable housing? So we look at this as an opportunity. We got together with the different departments, and RMA said, "How can we support parks and their initiative to improve quality of life?" And so we jointly decided to submit Leadbetter Park. We were able to obtain about $414,000, which your Board allowed us to apply for and accept. Now we're back to move forward with the project, because that's what you care about, is when do we get started with the work? We're giving you a proposed update and a method for how we're going to move forward. This, what RMA's role is, is to try to set the table, go get the funds, to facilitate the projects for the needs they've identified. And John's going to talk about the needs, and what they wanted to do, and how they worked with the public to determine what they wanted out there. We're here to just provide the money and be his back office, if you will, and, and take care of the administration.
Yes, so thank you, it is a great model for us to improve our parks and bring some money into the park system, so we have worked on developing a preliminary scope for the parks, and Neil has a very ambitious list that he wants to do there in the park, and he's been working, of course, diligently to see which items are needed, not only from an infrastructure standpoint, but as well as improve the recreational opportunities. As we proceed with the design, we'll have a greater understanding of what we can afford with our available funding. Some of the things we want to do, for example, improve and upgrade the electrical capacity, install drinking water fountains and walking trails, both of which, separate and apart from this effort, we're using a similar model with HSA to also kind of leverage their Health and Human Services, their, their activity sort of funding and capacity there as well, ADA sidewalks, harbor renovations, and playground improvements. So, again, very great opportunity for us to use kind of a joint model for us to bring money to our parks, and we're very happy to be at the table.
Any comments or questions from Board members?
I'm just curious if, are we engaging with our Parks Advisory Committee on this particular project?
Correct, so the Advisory Committee's been brought up to speed. In fact, RMA has done several presentations of the Parks Advisory Committee over the last few months. Also, our Capital Projects Acting Manager, Dennis Lehman, has had site visits to look at all the various different infrastructure elements, so we've been working pretty well hand in glove with, with all those elements.
And I don't know if you've done it, but I might suggest that you might also touch bases with the school district there. I know they're very interested in the park, and, and so they, they're the ones who often contact me about park issues, and so if you haven't, if you haven't contacted Jelanda Valdez, the Superintendent of the Cutler Rossi Schools, I would encourage you to do so. I know she'll be just absolutely, if you haven't talked to her, she'll be thrilled to know that you're taking steps forward, because it's certainly needed out there.
Very good, I'll see if we have, and if we haven't, we'll definitely reach out to her.
And thank you very much, by the way, for this effort. Well, it'd be very useful in that community.
One last point, because we believe in transparency, we're doing the public's business. We want to show our methodology, and as you know, we did this similarly, we took advantage of this and did three major park improvements last year, Goshen, some other work in Leadbetter, and then created the new Plainview Park. What we found very effective here is, we don't have a landscape architect on staff. So we found, we, we worked within our budget authority of these funds, similar to what we did last time, and we want to contract with Urban Tree Foundation, because what they will do is, they have the landscape architect, but they're also going to take care of some other things that are important to do. We don't have on staff, we have excellent engineers that could build you a bridge, they could build the Titanic, but they can't wire it. We don't have an electrical engineer to do that, to provide that stamp. So, working with John, we went through, and you'll see on page two, we are contracting with Urban Tree for $74,000, but that's not what they keep. They are the pass-through to develop the site plan, the civil engineering plans, the electrical engineering plan. They are giving us a menu of options that will actually exceed what we want to do. If the bids come in low, we can do more. We also have a master plan, you know, it's all about strategy here, for what we can do next time on the shelf, if we can find ways to make additional enhancements.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a few things. Of course, I'm a big supporter of parks, and I think anytime that we can improve our parks, or add more open space is a great thing. There, in the report, it talks about $10,000 from the general fund allocation to offset costs to manage the project. What about ongoing maintenance of the park? That's always, you know, when we do improvements and whatnot, we need to always consider maintaining the asset, and so how will that be taking place? And I would like to, go ahead and answer that first.
Sure, hopefully, these items are, our intent with them is actually to help us decrease our, our maintenance efforts, in that upgrading electrical, upgrading irrigation, upgrading the sidewalks, things like that, hopefully bring it down to where we have to pay, excuse me. So hopefully, that actually saves us costs in the long run.
And if I might just, to give a little background to, to our supervisor, new supervisor, in that park, as in Mooney Grove, we also had a problem with water. We had lost some trees because our watering system was not adequate, our pump was not right, so we replaced the well there, improved that system. So we are making infrastructural investments in these parks that is long, long, long overdue. And so it's, we're moving in the right direction, and as John said, these improvements will reduce our maintenance costs and efforts, because right now, we have just been doing an awful lot of bubble gum and, and baling wiring going on around there. So we're real excited about this new opportunity that we are seeing and moving forward with our parks to make improvements.
Now, you said you're going to be doing some outreach and whatnot with the, the folks in the neighborhood for, for input on this? I don't know if the county already does this, but maybe, you know, I know when we did the dog park years ago, it's really important to get ownership, and whether or not, you know, you can pull folks in to have, adopt a park type of thing, where they take care of the park themselves, I think will really help in, in that maintenance effort, too.
We've been working in, in RMA on community plan updates, and we've been working off a large grant, Mike Washam is really quarterbacking this. We've done, we're working in 23 communities, we have more than, we've either conducted or we will finish the balance of more than 200 community outreach meetings. So we've been asking the question for about a year and a half, what are your transit needs, what are your transportation needs, what, if we, you know, what do you think about recreation? Do you play in a park? Do you have a park? Do you want a park? What do you want in a park? So we've got a long history of asking them what they need. In this case, they gave us very good feedback, but we have some, frankly, safety issues. If you don't take care of things, they, they deteriorate. And so what we're trying to do, you're right, the ongoing maintenance is an issue with everything we do in the county, but what we were trying to do is provide some sorely needed funds to kind of stretch the county parks dollars to make some of the fundamental improvements, the electrical system. We're spending a ton of money, either having people dig up and fix leaky pipes, or we could replace them, and then we know at least how old these pipes are. So we are trying to get ahead of the maintenance there.
Great, thank you.
Anyone from the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We're now going to move on to item number 18, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to authorize the preparation and supplemental of an application for a First Five Tulare County Grant to install new toddler playground equipment in Mooney Grove. Real quick, before we take up this item, I do sit on the First Five Commission, and I know that it's a, Supervisor Cox, when he was in the same capacity, recused himself on the Board side. I will be recusing myself on the First Five side of this, and will make sure that I do not partake in the deliberations as to who to award this grant to, from a First Five perspective, so just want to make that disclosure, but go ahead.
Oh, I was going to do the movie "We're Back," but we'll skip that. Oh, I was going to do the movie "We're Back," but we'll skip that.
Go get matching suits, we need to get matching suits next time.
We're always looking for additional money to bring into the county to support programs and projects. First five is, is literally what it says, it's a zero to eight, you know, unborn kids to age five, how do you provide healthy opportunities for them? And so, we, we wanted to submit on behalf of the Resource County Parks, we wanted to put an application in to develop a totlot, and John, again, is going to talk about this. The application process is fairly simple, it does require a match, and so we intend, we, we, we always come and ask for permission to apply before we apply, and do the deadlines where we're applying, we're asking permission to apply before we have the final numbers. These, you'd think building a playground set is easy, there's all kinds of health and safety regulations about, you can't use bark, you got to have a rubber, child-safe things, and so we're in the process of updating those estimates, but we believe that we can build this project for less than $75,000. So we're, we're approaching on it, do not exceed. The grant does require a, a match, and so we're asking for a match, the ability to provide a match up to $15,000. Now, John's pretty thrifty, and if he figures out to do, how to do this for $62,000, we'll just scale it down. But that's the method for what we want to do, and then John will tell you what we want to do with the money.
Yeah, very simple, this is sort of the same model, we're in the earlier stages applying for the money, so whereas in Leadbetter, we have the money, we're moving forward, this one we're applying for, and hopefully are going to be competitive. So, Mooney Grove Park is probably our largest park, serves the largest population, and surely has the largest foot traffic for recreational purposes, and so we presently have three different playground areas. We are proposing adding a new playground area specifically designed for toddlers, kind of zero to five-year-olds, where they may not be able to play with the bigger kids. On the other playground, this is something more designed for them. We presently have themes at each of our different playground areas, because this would be in the vicinity of the lion country, which is associated with the Lion Service Club, we would probably want to use that theme, sort of lion jungle-type theme, so, again, trying to expand our opportunities into a larger population with one of our largest kind of central parks, so that's, that's the intent there, and we're hoping to have your answer questions.
So it would be a true jungle gym, then?
Exactly, exactly.
All right, any questions from board members?
How are we going to deal with the birds? No.
Have to wash it down a lot.
Any questions from members of the public? Seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion. We might want to have a baby croc put in there, too.
I approve of this item.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Shucklian.
Second.
A second from Supervisor Crocker, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
That's a croc.
That concludes our open session, council will debate closed session.
It would be an interesting time.
Yes, on the regular agenda, there are items A through F. Item D is a worker's compensation claim, number CT16010329, and on the addendum, item G, I anticipate that there may be an announcement out of closed session.
Okay, before we go back to closed session, I know our Fire Chief would like to display his newly obtained equipment, so let's head on out there and check that out real quick.
Going outside here?
Yeah, he's not going to drive it in.
Get a charge.
This is Deanne Peterson, reporting out on closed session date January 31, 2017, item B, on the motion of Supervisor Mike Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Steve Worthy. Worthy, the board voted to provide a defense to Sheriff's Department employees Roger Wenzinger and Jason Villarreal with a reservation of rights. This concludes the reporting out for this date's closed session.